To tonight's work session, we'll get started with budget review. We've got a couple of council members, one of them is working late and one is on their way, but we do have three of us here and we would not be voting on anything, so we should be fine. So Mayor Wilson, if I may, start with the budget review.
Okay, thank you. Is this the one? Okay. The books are coming to you, they're being printed right now. If I hadn't -- okay.
You gotta get it right on the microphone.
How about now? Okay. If I wasn't out last week, we would've met one-on-one and gone over it in detail, but now we're doing it vice versa. We're gonna do the presentation, you're gonna get the books tonight, which we can go over to, they're coming out in a minute, and then we can answer questions next week before you vote on it. The difference between, this is the original budget book that we got in November of last year, and the one that is coming, it's a lot easier to read. Oops, let me get it over here. What I did, the way the budget book reported before, all you had was Budget 2016 and Budget 2017, two columns, and what this was missing were actual numbers. I found actual numbers for 2016, original proposed budget for 2017, my adjustments, and then a revised final budget on the other column, so you can read it very easily, and it's not thick, transparent. "The election of a new administration provides an opportunity to conduct a review of all major functions and departments to identify opportunities to provide services efficiently and at a reasonable and sustainable cost. The following changes have been accomplished with the first budget, but understand, this is a living document that needs to be updated. We are gonna have, from now on, a quarterly review for you to look at, so it's no longer gonna be an annual event. We have to do this because things change during the year and they need to be adjusted. Department heads need to be engaged, you know, definitely quarterly, so we're making sure that we're staying on track." This budget, a lot has changed, and I'm gonna go over it with you. First of all, department heads and all the supervisors were engaged individually by the departments, and we spent a lot of times, a whole day, just going through what they turned in, because what they turned in for their budget and what was actually in the budget were two different things, and oftentimes the department heads wouldn't know, you know, what they were gonna get until after it was published. We can't treat a budget like an annual event, it's a living document, and it will absolutely, from now, here on out, be supervisor engaged. Each department now will have their own financials. Before, the old budget book, you had the utilities broken out into their own financials, and then general fund. The general fund was just there, and it wasn't broken out. You would see the different departments as far as what they needed for the budget, but it didn't report it in a way that showed income and expenses. And without knowing, you know, where each one stands, again, a budget is just not, an accurate budget is just not, we can't do it. When you get the budget books, which hopefully they're gonna come any second, let me tell you, I think this was the most lightning speed budget book ever put together, anyway, started Monday. But unbelievably, with all the changes and updates, and there's gonna be a lot, you'll see a column of adjustments. The difference between the budget proposed last year and my budget is about $5,000. I mean, it was, I just saw the number as I was walking into this room, I'm like, is it plus $500,000? I mean, I had no idea. Now, this is a big map of our area, but what I wanted to show you here is, in the blue and yellow, basically that's all of our area for school district and planning, and you can kinda see the edges of a red and black, I wish I had a cursor, but, anyway, that shows the police jurisdiction, but the pink area, and this is what I wanted you to see, that is inside the city limits. And what you can see when you look at this is that, you know, inside the city limits makes up less than one-third of the geographic area, but most of our services, you know, extend out of our city limits. Last year, a population data obtained by the Eastern Shore Chamber said that within the city limits, it was a little over 18,000, and 36532, population was over 30,000. That didn't include Montrose, Point Clear, and the surrounding area, but everything that we service in that area. So what I'm trying to demonstrate here, and this is, has a lot to do with our financials now, is we are at a tipping point. I don't think there's another city around that looks like this, that has the pink area that's really paying for most of the operation of the city, and almost everything else outside that pink is unzoned. And these are the things that we'll be addressing this term. Okay. We have our city financials, which is what we're proposing tonight, and the Fairhope Public Utilities. Now, we're very fortunate to own all of our utilities, but we have to report them financially as two separate entities. Doesn't mean that we want, we are not gonna use our utilities to benefit our city, in fact, we have to, but if you don't report them independently, then, again, you're not gonna come up with an accurate budget, but you're also not gonna really understand where the city is financially. You know, we need to know if we're running at a deficit, which we have been, is that getting bigger and bigger? And like I said, with the growth happening outside the city limits, that's what we have to look at, and our budget does increase every year, and it is taxing, in an extreme way, the people who live inside the city limits. This is, first of all, I wanna introduce you to Jill Kabinus, she is our finance director, and let me tell you, she is working very hard. She's done an amazing job. And Gail, but I'm not sure if she's in here, but she's bringing in the budget book, they have just worked so hard to put all of this together, 'cause we really did, you know, start from scratch. I mean, we totally redid all of the financials, to report a different way. In 2013, to the right, what was reported as a profit of $151,904, if you didn't use the utilities as a transfer, and, we're gonna be using the utilities as a transfer, we have to do it, but these utility funds were, some of them were transfers, and then some of them were included in the operating expense of the utilities. In other words, the cities operating for 2017, there was about $2.5 million of city operating that was put under utilities to pay for it. It's okay for the utilities to pay for $2.5 million of the cities operating, but it has to be a transfer, otherwise, you're not gonna know how the city is really doing. So I think that's a pretty substantial difference that you can see in 2013. 2014, it said that we profited $2,072, when actually, we lost almost $4.4 million. This is 2015 and 16, and you can see in 2015, we reported a profit of $543,280, and actually, we had a loss of over $2 million. And with, oh, is that, can y'all read that? Okay. 2016, we had a loss of, this was our actual loss, was $4,222,000. We reported a loss of $362,860. So I think you can see that, you know, it's not that we're not gonna use our utilities to subsidize our city right now, we have to, but unless we know truly how the city is running financially, we're never gonna see, where do we have to make changes? We have to run the city based on being sustainable in and of itself, and now we can start looking at the ways that we can fix the city's financials, because the utilities' profits need to be invested in utility infrastructure and the things that we really want for our city to improve our quality of life, and right now, these funds are not being put into the capital funds that they need to be. Infrastructure needs, we are, right now, doing a study on our water, sewer, and gas. That will be finished before the moratorium. We're doing just kind of a, just to establish about what we're gonna need for the emergency needs, to make sure that we can get ahead of the development. So, in water, sewer, and gas, we're, it's gonna be an unknown right now, until that study is done. In the electric department, we did do a study in June, and the infrastructure needs, it gave us three plans, and I have discussed with several people in the know, 'cause I'm not, you know, familiar with the electric department, but the way to go, according to many so far, but we'll continue the conversation, is that we have $8,755,000 of infrastructure needs for our electric department. And what that will entail is the five older substations that we have right now, one is on Valanta and will be turning 50 years old next year, so I thought that I could do my birthday party out there, and we're gonna celebrate 50 years. Good idea? We're gonna be consolidating all of those substations into four, and they're all four new substations. In the gas, we do know that we have to replace 16 miles of iron, I mean, cast iron pipes, and we have been doing that a little bit at a time, 'cause we have 16 miles left and we had 20 to begin with. If we did just approximate costs for having an outside company do it all at once, so we can kinda measure that with doing it ourselves a little bit every year, and that was about $4.6 million. But again, the study hasn't been completed, that's just the only thing we know right now for gas. Funding opportunities and ways to save money. I just put a quick, let me, that's very tiny. Some things that we identified going through all of the expenses were that we need to probably put in a safety plan, because our workman's comp is very, very high, as far as what we pay out each year, and there are multiple employees that have reports that are, you know, more than once a year, and so I just think safety training is key. There's a lot of things that we can put into place, easy things, that can reduce our liability and reduce this cost. We need to invest in training. We have a munis system, that's the name of our municipal software, and we've had it for about, you know, about four years, and there are still, you know, big departments that need to implement their modules, get training. Our utilities are still kind of in limbo, and that limbo is really costing us a lot each month, because we're having to kind of extract out of our old system, import it into our new system, it's time-consuming, and when we do transfer all of those things, there's a lot of savings that's gonna take place. One will be, uh-oh, I didn't, I didn't put that list, but trust me, it's a lot each We have, we're gonna put in fleet management and really start liquidating and turning our vehicles quicker. We need to liquidate, first of all, I'm gonna go back, we had, I think, a listing of about 260 passenger vehicles, and I'm like, don't we have about that and employees? So what I did is I got everybody to do a physical inventory, and then had the liability insurance reconcile that, and this was just a small savings, but it definitely made us really think about, we have to make sure that what we're insured with and what we actually have, it needs to be really addressed. The savings for that was $7,800, but we have 43 vehicles right now that are not in use, and we're giving them to, we're gonna liquidate them, and the savings alone on just, we're paying insurance on those two, $21,000 in insurance for just vehicles that are not being used, and that department's now gonna liquidate it on a continual basis, because it's not just, you know, money that we can use now to invest in other things, we are paying for unnecessary liability insurance. Because we're not staying on top of the vehicle and large equipment, we're spending 500,000, over $500,000 a year with mechanical repairs, and when you add in the labor, we have basically a whole, you know, department that's dedicated to this, it's over $900,000 a year. We are installing two Fuel Masters, which is a fuel management system, and allows that department to track every drop of fuel in and out of tanks, ensuring real-time inventory. We're gonna look into contracting labor for things that will reduce our liability, I mean, this is just a simple thing, but just moving the barricades for parades and helping out with events. When we hire, you know, a business that can bring in that labor, we're not only not paying overtime, but we're not paying more in workman's comp, we are decreasing injury, and I mean, overall, our employees are gonna have overtime and overtime they want, but it is, we are, I'm gonna get to the next slide, we are spending a lot of money on overtime, and this is stressful, and it increases injury. We need to beef up our maintenance on buildings. Right now, we are repairing buildings on an emergency basis, and keeping up with our annual maintenance, studies have shown that it costs 40% less to maintain buildings than to get to the point where you're replacing them. We're also going to be consolidating our administrative and services among departments. I'll get to the organizational chart in just a minute. We also need to look at the coverage that we have on all of our real assets, to make sure that our buildings not only have the liability insurance and replacement costs that we need, but also termite, pest control, and things like that. We're looking into taking eight police dispatchers per year, at a cost of 260, roughly $265,000, and this part I might have to get Jeff to help me with, but anyway, we're gonna, by doing this, and it's gonna happen towards the end of the year, dispatch right now is taking in, at 5 o'clock, all the rollover lines, which means if somebody's calling in to say, you know, just a question, or, you know, get my cat out of the tree, whatever it is, that's going to our police department, and this is, you know, preventing, it could potentially prevent real emergencies from being addressed quickly. So we have to separate out our customer service at that time, at the end of the day, so that we have our dispatch, the police are actually handling the needs that they need to. Overtime here is not budgeted, it's not gonna be in the budget that you have and received in November, and now, we're gonna have to really work on this. We spent a total of, in all the departments, $562,800 on overtime, and we have to identify, okay, do we need more personnel? Are there people that are not, you know, that are taking off a lot? I mean, we just have to look at everything. Of course, we have emergencies, and we have things we have to deal with, but we have to really control the overtime. That was about 6,700 hours of overtime. So if we have a budget for overtime, and you know you're getting, you know, short of your overtime, we're gonna be able to better address personnel needs. Another way, I mean, this is a thing that I wanna start talking about now for options, but we do love our tree lighting, and we wanna continue this, but we do need to come up with a more economical way to save on labor. The tree lighting expense, excuse me. Basically, what we have right now, we purchase the lights, which really, that's all you saw in the budget, were the lights that we had to purchase, that's one of the smallest The labor is what is really, and not only is it, the labor is expensive, but it's taking our utility department, city employees, and I'm telling you, three months of putting up tree lights, I mean, it's just, I don't think it's what they wanna be doing. Let's just say, I've talked to a lot of them. We want to, but we want to continue this special event, so we do have to come together with options. The power is, well, I'll just go through it real quick. The cost of the tree lights was about, the original amount was $17,000 for the regular lights, and $20,000 for the LED, and it was $157,500 for labor, $15,000, well, if you take them down and cut them down, the labor is a lot less, it's about $14,000, and if you try to save the lights, it not only takes a lot more time, about three times longer, but it cost about $36,000. And then this year, we spent an additional $40,000, and then there's the power for both. The power for the regular lights is, it was over, almost $15,000, and for the LED, a little over $3,000. So LED's the way to go, because, again, they cost a little bit more per, you know, strand, but the power is a big saving. So we spent approximately $268,000 on tree lights, and, again, it's just, we're not gonna do away with it, but we do have to look at the total cost, 'cause this has never been broken out in a way that we can see what it's truly costing us. I think it's fantastic. I am a benefactor of a big tree in front of my store. I love it, but we do have to look at that cost. And these are, I'm going through some ways that we need to look at, ways we can be more efficient. The library, which is a huge asset for our town, we currently, well, this year, the 2017 budget request for the appropriation was $858,330. I am missing a slide here, but from memory, in the last four years, it's gone up about $200,000. I will have actual figures on here when I post it. The library is set up as its own entity, and because of this, there's a lot of duplication of administrative costs and services. If we ran this department like we run all the other departments, this is kinda what it would look like for savings. First of all, it would cost the city to run that, run the library, $586,000, about $586,000. The budget for the library currently, just for the products, services, and things like that, it's broken out into a big financial, is $118,600. We, the employees would get better benefits, and their vacations, holidays, sick, et cetera, would match the city's, and that's about a savings of $15,000, for a total savings of $168,210. The library can keep their income of $75,000, I'm not even putting this into the figure, so they would keep the $75,000 that they have, get their library funding for their books and everything else they need of $118,600. We could give them an additional $50,000 and still save the city $118,210. So it is something we need to discuss. Again, you see where the city stands financially, and, you know, we have to look at everything, these are tax dollars. You know, we want better services for our library, not, that budget has actually increased, I mean, decreased for the products they needed in adult and childrens, that budget decreased from last year to this year, we wanna increase that, and we can increase it and save money. I believe, and I've stated this before during council meetings, we currently have, this is last year, last four years, that we paid out for municipal attorneys. It's averaged $136,752 is the average per year, what we pay municipal attorneys. There are municipal attorneys that are, their experience is municipal law, they are skilled in planning, they're skilled in everything that we ask all these different attorneys to do, and if we had a full-time, in-house attorney, this would not only, we would have more access to an attorney, we would know exactly what we're going to spend each year, but we would spend less money as well. It would decrease our liability, because right now, we contact attorneys as a, you know, on a on-need basis. It is gonna be a little bit more this year, because, just for the municipal part, because we are engaging Tutt and his firm a lot more instead of Hand, Darnall. That's our outside, that was our outside council. That's our outside, that was our outside council. We hired a new attorney and firm, Matt McDonald, and we're no longer gonna pay a premium over and above what insurance charges. This is gonna be an enormous savings, and I will be able to give you more information on that after this year, but it's going to be a huge savings. The other area that I believe, you know, we really have to look at, we have to look at our city not as a city of 18,000 people, we have to look at it as a city with a $60 million budget. We have a lot to protect, and we need access to engineers during the process, not for stamps of approval. And you do have to have, you know, we've been contracting out engineering for every department you see here, planning, public works, capital projects, and utilities. Capital projects, you know, a lot of that still will have outside engineering. But when you look at these departments and see what they average per year, which is on the bottom there, what we spend on an average each year for civil engineering, you can see, not having one engineer that works for the city, that's a problem. We need, we just hired Richard Peterson, which I'm very, very thankful about, and I think he might be here, but he is a professional civil engineer, and he will be over utilities, can help out, you know, with other things as well. But that's, we don't know exactly how much that's gonna save yet, but it will be a good amount. This was the organizational chart that was in your original budget book, and what I have identified, just not in, with staff meetings, but just in general communication, this is, this is really an organizational chart that is not efficient. You have a lot of department heads, we actually have more than what's listed on here, but, you know, we really need to come up with a more efficient streamlined way to communicate and to just, you know, make sure that everybody knows what's going on every day. The new org chart, and this is a draft right now, hold on. Oh, but also, this also removed a lot of duplication. And we can, when we combine some of these things together, it will create more synergy and collaboration, which I think will increase productivity. The new organizational chart is, the biggest thing is look what's on top, the citizens of Fair Hope. That's the most important thing. We work for the citizens of Fair Hope, and then the structure is more streamlined, because, you know, before having, not, this organizational chart does not mean order of, you know, power, it's more communication. It's broken down now for operation director, public works director, planning director, and economic and community development director. And then, all of the department heads remain, but it's just a better way to communicate, have shared resources, 'cause there's a lot of personnel that can be shared, and shared The other area that we're gonna have to look at is our health insurance. In the last four years, we, the City of Fair Hope is self-insured. In the last four years, our insurance, health insurance has gone up 35%. And, you know, that might sound like a lot, but it truly has gone up a lot more for most individuals. I do think remaining self-insured is gonna be the way to go, but we do have to look at options, because this type of an increase is not sustainable. We have, at the time when we did this report, around 280 full-time employees, and the family insurance, there's 220 of those 280 employees that have family insurance, and 57 who have single. And what's happening when you do something, I mean, our insurance is free, there's no deductible. So, if that's the option, it's the best option out there. So, a lot of times, you know, the families are gonna come on board, and, you know, spouses, we just have to look at ways to mitigate that liability and expense a little, I mean, just a little bit of changes can save a lot of money. We're gonna do a comp study for our personnel, and we're gonna have it, so it's ordered, and hopefully available, October, November this year. And what the comp study in the past has shown is salaries based on like municipalities in the area. Auburn actually has this study that comes to us, and it's gonna be out in a couple of months. I think we should consider that, you know, 'cause it just includes municipalities in the state of Alabama. But the most important thing we need to do when we're doing a comp study is to show what it looks like when you're paying 100% of the insurance. That is, I think, just based on talking to all the employees, one of the most important features of working for the city. And it is good for the city to pay for as much of that insurance as it can, as it can, because it is, we don't have to pay the shared payroll taxes. So, the city too, has a savings there. And of course, that's pre-tax, so that would be a good benefit for us. But the benefits package has to be looked at with insurance and salary, because if we do a comp study just on salary, and then we make sure that we're in line with that or better, we wanna be competitive, we wanna always attract the absolute best talent that we can. And then we're, but we're offering something that is not available anywhere else in the state of Alabama, you know, that can't be omitted from the comp study. What we're gonna do when we come up with options is, you know, it won't be up to me. We're gonna bring all the council together, our personnel board, and we're gonna put together a group of our city employees, and then just talk about what would be best for the city employees. And there will be options. The biggest changes will come from new employees. We will have ways to incentivize it, to lower that cost, and, let's see here, and some families have, you know, their spouse has insurance, there might be ways to make it, if they went and, you know, did their own insurance, the city could make up that difference. I don't know. I mean, I don't know all the rules out there yet, but I do know that I want to keep this benefit very good for our employees. Personnel compensation. Our insurance for family, and since most employees have family insurance, last year was approximately, and I don't have it in front of me, I think it's approximately 15,000, and then this year, it went up to, hold on, I have it in here. Okay, it was 14,039. The estimate for 2017 is 17,404. Because of that big difference, we are going to need, right now, to put in place the merit raises to start in September, which is our, the end of our fiscal year, that will start 2018. We have been giving city employees a merit-based, not a merit-based, a cost-of-living raise, I don't know how, for how many years, but in 2015, it was 3%, and in 2016, it was 2%. To do that again this year, which was in the budget, would be about 256,000. I would rather put that towards merit-based, which is not given to, you know, it's kind of a minority, and make sure that the people who are performing above average are lifted up. You know, cost-of-living raises, I think we're, it's just, it's old school, we just can't do it that way anymore, 'cause it's not affordable. We want to make sure that city employees are rewarded well for great work, and most of them have and perform very well. But when you're lifting everybody up the exact same every year, you're lifting a percentage of people up that aren't doing as much, and I think that creates lower morale, and, you know, we really just want to, the people that are doing very well to shine, and be compensated for it. But they are also gonna need very clear goals. And right now, you know, if you do, we do do annual assessments, but we want employees to be engaged every quarter. This is where we are, this is where we wanna be. You know, you have to give people an opportunity to improve before they're surprised by either not getting a raise, or, you know, you don't want to be surprised annually. It has to be engaged on a quarterly basis. So that's what we're gonna work on now. When you get the budget books, and I did say that they were coming, can we check on those for me? Okay. You're gonna have details on all of these lists, and so this will not only be on, it'll be in the budget book and posted, but for the purpose of having a screen and something you can see. The 2016 salary budget was over 13 million, the actual, almost in line. The 2017 salary budget is gonna be a little bit more, because we have, we created a new department, which we're gonna get to in just a minute, and, but we also have savings for, you know, some that are gonna be retiring, some that are just being replaced. They've either left, and they're gonna be replaced with someone at a lower income. I wanted to also mention, this is, all the department heads have been waiting since we've taken office for this. These are all 43 hires that need to happen right now. So, there are some hires you hear about, because they're big positions, but 43 positions right now have been waiting patiently until the budget is passed. And we will get to the hiring freeze, but, you know, know that this has nothing to do with me, this has to do with our city and moving it forward, and it has to do with the departments having the things they need to be efficient and bring our citizens the best services. But still, with all of the adjustments, and you'll see all of them, the net adjustment between what was put in last year and mine is negative 31,338. And Sherri Lee, is she here? Sherri Lee?
Yeah.
Okay. She has, I was gonna do a slide about the new department, but she put it together, and we're just gonna put that up. Jeff?
Should we immigrate?
No, I told him to leave it separate. Maybe he did.
Let's go to the next one, just see.
He did, okay. You wanna sit here beside him? Here.
Just don't want my back.
Hey there. Is this on? Can you hear me? Okay. Okay, so I've been talking about, kinda sharing a little bit about what this department will do, so I've just put something together, and the mayor asked me if I would just go ahead and speak about it. Of course, I'm, of course, of all days, I'm completely stopped up, so forgive me, 'cause no one likes to listen to that. Where's the remote? Yeah, I got it. So, we're calling it the Office of Economic and Community Opportunity. It's also, you know, economic and community development, a lot of cities are now, you know, starting to call it opportunity, which I really like. So, I wanna talk about who we are. Department encompasses, it will encompass, well, it started now, all of community recreation, events, communications, tourism, and will be closely coordinated with planning, land use initiatives, and programs. If I could give a comparison, I don't know if you paid attention to Mobile, they've had something called a Bloomberg Innovation Fellow. I would kind of say it's a cross between that and what's called a Chief Resilience Officer, and I'll explain a little bit more about what that means. It's just kind of a methodology of working within municipal structures now. Oh, did it go forward? Nope, hold on, sorry, what we do. So, you can see, you can read the slide for yourself, but I'll talk a little bit more. There's a UNC study that was conducted with the Carcy Institute out of New Hampshire, the Center for Rural Entrepreneurship, the Aspen Institute, and others, that talks about how in smaller towns, community development is economic development, they're one and the same. And so, this is why we've combined these things, and I know we've had some conversation in the past about, you know, what my role was versus what community affairs was like in the past, and they're really very different things, and I'll explain a little bit more about what that means. But you can see that part of this role is securing, working on securing state and federal grants, and developing strategies for marketing who Fair Hope is, and there's a little more to it than that, which I'll go, promise it, not gonna be too long. And then we strengthen communities, so smart growth that bolsters local economy, education, community involvement. So, we incorporate economic and broader, longer-term community development goals, and we stand to gain more in small towns than taking a piecemeal approach. So this is really about connecting multiple initiatives throughout the city, and that's really what resilience, planning, and design thinking is all about. And these are kind of, a lot of you may know, words that cities are using now, and are kind of a best practice in the way to work. And then we foster local talent, so we know that, the mic?
No, I'm in your room.
Oh.
No, I'm in your room.
Yes, I'm really, boy, there we go. Local talent, so innovative initiatives that support small businesses, entrepreneurs, and creatives. So, launching initiatives in partnership with our local schools and universities to provide a pipeline for growing and supporting local entrepreneurship, and we know that that's really important to Fair Hope. It's, we're founded on the principles of entrepreneurship, so we want to support and grow that initiative, or grow that talent locally. And there are a number of ways, which you'll hear about, you know, over, over time, that will roll out, that we're planning to do, and conversations have already started around this, and I'm excited to share what that looks like too. Preserve our local, God, there you go, it's like patting your head and rubbing your tummy. We preserve our local heritage, creating responsible efforts to protect our unique city culture and landscape. All that means is really what it says. I mean, part of the role of this department is also to look at ways to preserve our assets, our cultural, architectural, environmental, they're all foundational to the work that we'll be doing. So, it really is an underlying principle of everything that, that will come out of the department. And then, cities are complex, even, you know, the mayor mentioned a few things about how Fair Hope is special and complex in its own ways. And we wanna create a communication pipeline that's really effective between the City of Fair Hope, our government, and our stakeholders, and our main stakeholders are the citizens, you know, our communities. So, working with various departments, this is the other thing about, you know, working across sector within the city, we'll be working with IT, with planning, communications, to streamline everything we communicate to our citizens and provide. streamline everything we communicate to our citizens and provide ways to receive feedback to help us better serve them, or I should say you, those of you that are out here. I'm one. And so, you know, it'll be tailored communication, so there'll be things that will, we're working on our new website, and that will be an interactive approach, social media, regular old, you know, sitting down with people. I mean, all the different ways we gather it, but we'll synthesize that information, and the output will be, you know, serving, serving the citizens in the best way we can. And then, again, collaborating across departments to create these community-centered solutions. Thank you. We'll take a resilient and comprehensive approach to evaluating and implementing all of our programs. We'll take into consideration economic growth, incorporate outreach, community engagement and education, and this is where the community design studio comes into play, which will be, you know, really a hub, a central location for disseminating information, providing expertise and innovative ideas about how we grow, best practices in design, healthy communities and other things. And that's the last one. Well, there's, there's this one. And yeah, we already got to work, but just to wrap it up. Thank you.
And so that's going to be our new department, which you will see in your book. All of the departments have not been finalized with their financials. They are in the general fund and broken out into subcategories, but, you know, we will have more detail to those as we start reporting more information. Jill has gone back to the beginning of this fiscal year, so starting in October, we are now reporting in this format so we can see truly where we are as a city. And the last slide. Maybe it's in there. The hiring freeze. Okay, I mentioned before, this is the stack of needs. The local resolution for which our city attorney made this decision regarding the hiring freeze was enacted before 1992. The Supreme Court confirmed in 2011 with the Coachman case that the role of the mayor in a Class 8 city, that the mayor has a sole responsibility for hiring and firing. According to Dillon's rule, which is the rule that we, for state, our state legislation, the mayor and council can only exercise the powers they've been granted. Council cannot infringe on my authority to carry out mayor's duties. As far as a hiring freeze, state legislation does not mention this, therefore, based on Dillon's rule, it cannot be done. I have confirmed with several attorneys that have researched this in more detail, and all agree the freeze is unlawful. But let's put legal aside and leave the attorneys out of it. What is best for the city? That's what we need to ask ourselves. It is for us to work together and to make our city successful by fulfilling our roles. The council has its role, and I can promise you, you make decisions that upset me sometimes, but I'm not going out there and trying to change the law. The mayor, I mean, I think although that you are upset, and I understand it, it's not a reason to try and stop the city from moving forward. We cannot allow our emotions to control decisions. We can't stop progress and prevent our department heads from hiring their needs to run the city efficiently with excellent service and in a manner our citizens demand. If council throws up roadblocks every time they're upset, what are we accomplishing? Some have said a breather, some a timeout is what we need. The city cannot afford to take a timeout. We have to serve our citizens every single day. This is not about me. It's about running a city. It's about all of our department heads having needs they've been waiting for since this, for this budget to pass. Some of these have been waiting for four months. It is crippling our city, and it is not the council's role to prevent me from doing my job, not permanently, not temporarily. Some of, some of you have mentioned that you want more communication. So do I, but that communication goes two ways. Who called me when they were upset Friday after this happened, before y'all decided to do a hiring freeze? It's communication. It does go both ways. I don't want to hire an attorney and file an injunction. I don't want to give all the power to attorneys to communicate when all of us were voted in to work together and to communicate. I have never tried to prevent council from doing their job. We have to come together today and do what is right for our city.
Counsel, any questions on the budget to start with?
Not yet.
Not yet.
I like the streamlined version.
It'll be easier to review.
I appreciate getting the budget and look forward to getting together with council to President's request, get together with council, discuss these items in the budget.
Yeah, I keep getting told that. I'm going to have to raise my voice apparently or get into this, but I appreciate the mayor bringing the budget to us and looking forward to the council getting together at the president's discretion to let, give us a meeting time to get together and discuss these items in the budget and see if we can't get this thing moving forward.
Jim?
One comment. I do look forward to reviewing the budget as well. I'm the council liaison for the library board. I know if there are opportunities for the city to save money, that should be considered, but the library board is adamantly opposed to being brought under the city as a department. They're very concerned that that would be detrimental to the library. Just putting that out there, letting everyone know, and I don't want to rush into any kind of an adjustment without taking time to consider all the ramifications.
Yeah, that's a good comment. It's a good comment, Councilman Conyers. I noticed that it did reduce the cost by $270,000, and I do look forward to looking into that in detail and discovering exactly how that's going to occur. I would like to say that on those options for the electrical upgrades, the eight point, I wrote down eight and a half million roughly, and consolidating those substations, I would like for you, mayor, to consult with council on that. There were some, there are several options on that, and try to make the best decision for the city when it comes to the gas department replacing all that pipe. I know that that's a couple of million dollars, but I think that we have like 15 or 20 years to do that, to get that additional 16 miles in, and I certainly would be opposed to borrowing any money to do that. I think that we can continue to do that even if it meant a little bit more labor to help with that. And these are just some of the things that I jotted down. I mean, there's many, many, many things that I want to go through on that budget. I look forward to looking more into all of that overtime pay. I do appreciate your efforts to try to solve the infrastructure problems that we have in the last four years. I will say, let's be clear that when it, when you state that the city lost $4 million, I think maybe we're talking about general government and not, not the city as a whole, because we did reduce the debt of the city by $16 million over the last four years. And granted, you know, there may have been some things that, that got, that got put off, but the ultimate goal was to reduce the debt to such a degree that the savings on interest payments alone would pay for a lot of these infrastructure improvements, and that's what I would like to see us continue to do, is get aggressive with that debt. Now, when we go through these studies, when we go through these studies, I would still like for us to consider, rather than going out and borrowing money, is, is I would be willing to relax some of that aggressiveness. We've been paying off our debt, and we've been paying off for the last almost five years now, an additional $2 million worth of debt, added on to whatever the, the debt payments already are. And I'd like for us to maybe consider dipping into that. We do have about seven, Deborah, maybe you can help me, seven and a half, 7.8 million dollars in reserves right now, in cash reserves, in the rainy day fund?
Seven million.
Seven million? But then we have a couple of other spillover accounts that add up to hundreds of thousands of dollars, right?
I was taking a little test, but yesterday, that got two and a half million dollars.
Right, okay.
What I was just going to mention is, yeah, we are paying off debt, but the funds, when you, when you look at it like this, they're being paid up out of utilities, and I'm for that. We want to pay down debt, but this is just strictly, just the operating of the city, but we'll go for more detail.
Well, yeah, one way that we did that was we reduced transfers from utilities. We kept money in the government to pay off the, the general government's debt, and then in one year, we kept money in the utilities so that we could pay off, we couldn't retire any debt without penalty in the general government, so we, we attacked it in the utility side. I just want to ask the council.
None of that will change. We just want to make sure that if that happens, it's a transfer out of utilities and not put into operating under utilities. It just has to show a line item that we borrowed this much money, not borrowed, you know, but that it is a line item that the city needed.
It's an opportunity cost, really, what you're describing. So, so I will, mayor, I will address the hiring freeze, if I may. Our city attorneys, both Marcus and Tutte, and also our other counsel, Matt McDonald, agreed that this was not an unlawful act. We are not taking your hire and fire authority away from you. In fact, we didn't hire anybody and we didn't fire anybody, and our intention is not to take that away from you. We, we put a temporary hiring freeze on there. We want, for one, we wanted to see the budget, and I will point out in there that there was an increase in salaries. I think you showed a net of $38,000, but over to the far right, and I want to look into this, I saw an approximately $600,000 increase in salaries. And so, and those were two highly paid positions that were, were let go, and I think that, in fact, I'll back up and also say that I talked to Sherri Lee about this, and she said that she would like to maybe see the community affairs director's position be retooled. So that's the perfect time during this hiring freeze to see what that position would look like, and so that's a good reason to do that. We're, we're not hiring for you and we're not firing for you. We do have the authority to stop the spending of money on that, and that's what we're doing. Now, I don't know on those 43 applications, if all of those are full-time, but seasonal and part-time employees are not affected by the hiring freeze, and so if that's the case, we're, we're not stymying the government. You said that it's been four months in, in waiting on this budget, and I know, and it's a big task. It is a big task, and I really appreciate the additional columns that you've put in here, mayor. I think that that's very helpful. It will make us be able to review this hopefully much quicker so that we can enact it. I do want to caution that the council will, you know, may make recommendations. We haven't been asked what necessarily, what we would like to see in the budget, and there have been parts of the budget that's already been passed, community development and some other things, I mean, on, on the EAC's budget tonight on council meeting. So I think that we do need to communicate, and there may be changes that council wants to make, and it is, you know, by state law, you mentioned Dillon Rule, is that we can't exercise any authority that's not given to us by state statute, and that's what that is. But we do have the authority to control the finances, and I do, and I'm not even saying I would change one cent in here yet, but I, just be prepared that we might have recommendations that, that we would like to make, and then, then we would be the final approving authority from this. Does anybody want to add to what I've said there? Those are, those are my opinions, not necessarily those of the other council members.
Well, I want to say that, to me, this, this looks like something you did in a rush. You constantly tell me, stop moving so fast. Y'all did this pretty fast, without even talking to me. You're not fully understanding the consequences of this, and if you're using this time to try to see how you can gain more power, again, what is that, why? I mean, why are we doing this to the city? Do you think that's in the best interest of the city?
Are you asking me or all of us?
All of you.
At this particular time, I think it's very good for the city. We need to know what we're spending money on, and we, until now, we had no idea. So yeah, I think it's a very good idea for the city.
This is not about, this was about you being upset and then not communicating.
Now, that's what you say. You and I had a discussion on that today, on what things look like and what things are real, reality and theory, basically, I would call that. And we had a discussion on that today, and that's not, that's not the truth.
But we wouldn't know because we weren't communicating, you know? So I just think that if you put something like that in place and you do it for that long, 60 days is a long time. We're in a moratorium. We have been at a loss and a deficiency in our planning to make sure that everything we need right now is happening. We had a planner that left and a planner that just started, and we've already needed a planner for a long time now. In addition, in that budget, you'll see a planning tech which takes care of a lot of the administrative stuff so that the planners can spend more time with the developers and the bigger picture. If you're, if you're going to want to extend the moratorium, then you can look into that. We also need, under Public Works, a civil engineer with stormwater management background. With that in place, we are not only going to save an enormous amount of money in engineering, contracting engineering, but we will have that in place with every planning that we do, both in public works and in planning. The citizens demand that we do something about stormwater runoff, and I have identified that that is the role for Public Works, and I think that needs to be brought in ASAP because we're in a moratorium.
I don't know that we disagree at all on that, mayor, but I will say that, you know, I believe the resolution stated up to 60 days. That was just to give us time. We had not had a budget in our hand until 20 minutes ago.
And it's ahead of time because it was going to be end of September, I mean, end of March.
Thank you, Jill.
Well, be that as it may, we thank you for giving us the budget, and, and like I said, the resolution said up to 60 days, and all of those positions that you're mentioning that are needed will be scrutinized by the council, and we can lift that freeze at any time, and it might be that when we adopt the budget. But now, now we have a lot more tools to work with. We have a lot more numbers to work with if we choose to create these positions or not to create these positions. I mean, the council, the, the authority to create all of these positions rests solely, and budgeting those positions rests solely with the council. We're not telling you to hire.
But why do we have to continue saying, me, 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 this is my job, this is the, you know, it has to be what is best for the city. Let's move the city forward. If this is something that, yes, take the time to look at this. You have a very easy format now to review this budget. I can promise you, look at the, I don't know if y'all have had time to look at the, the old budget. I mean, did you understand it?
Yeah. I wanted to make that, I wanted to make that point. It was, it was complicated, and so was, and so was a lot of the reporting, but, you know, it's something you get used to as a council member. You mentioned quarterly reporting. We do get monthly financials, as you all know, you've been receiving them from the finance department, and it is broken down by every single department, and it's quite detailed. It's about, what, 65 pages, maybe?
Which is, is too long, though. We, we have to do it in a way that we say we're on track.
I understand, but I, I think that you made a reference to the fact that, that the financials are going to be reported and that things were going to be broken down.
No, the budget, not the financials, but the budget.
Well, you mentioned that the, okay, then the budget was, you know, going to be broken down by department, and we do get monthly financials to look at on that, and it is complicated. If you want to look at that detail, or you train your eyes on looking at the larger picture, you look at the first five or six pages, so, anyway.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, those, the 43 positions are based on the new budget, right?
So that's all in there.
But right, they weren't affected by the hiring freeze. They're affected because of budget.
The, these are, have all been waiting right now.
On the budget?
Right.
Correct, so they're not affected by the hiring freeze, they're affected by the budget.
What's being affected right now is we were hiring a planner last week.
And I think we're addressing that tonight.
And that was an oversight, and I apologize, actually. Mr. Dyson said that was just, that was an oversight.
Like I said, there's lots of, lots of things that, that are being, I ask everybody to send me what we need right this, you know, very second. I don't know how much time you're going to need to, to going to need to look at this, but I am available this weekend and next week, and I think we should try to look at it and do something before the next council meeting.
I think we can try. I, that's, we typically spend quite a bit of time on this, and I know, I'll speak for myself again, I'll pour over this and have a lot of questions. As you know, three of us are going to National League of Cities, leaving this weekend, and will be gone most of next week. So it is very difficult to find any time to discuss those matters, or even look at that budget while you're there. It's all day.
You can do it on the plane.
It's all day, every day.
When you look at it, I'm telling you, if you took the tabs out of this, there isn't a lot to go through. You still have your original budget, and that's what I'm saying is, this is, of course, it's a little bit smaller font, but very easy to look through, and in a way that you can see actual numbers. I mean, what can you do with a budget for 2016 and a budget for 2017? The actual numbers are very different.
I believe, Jill, you had, you did have budget, in the prior budget that was proposed to us, you did have actual, you had, you had proposed, and then you had actual numbers in there, correct? And then you had 2017 proposal.
There was some separate sheets and notes for the council. That's not what it's like. What was bound in the reports, bound in the books, 2016, 17? Y'all actually did get extra printout of the actual.
Right, okay. I thought we had three columns in there.
I will say this, me being me, next year, since we only used half the page-
Right.
-on this small font.
Increase the font.
I'd sure appreciate it, being the oldest member here.
Yes. There's a lot of detail that we'll be doing.
I'll make it through this, and don't worry about it.
I want to put graphs in there, too, because I just learned how to do graphs on Excel, and we'll put more things in there.
Mayor, I also ask you, if there's a, out of those 43, if there's somebody that you feel is critical, such as a planner, bring it to us, and we'll, we'll take action that way, you know, until the budget is passed, if it's not done next meeting.
Well, if you ask the department heads, they're all going to say, "All of them are critical."
Sit down if it's an important position. Perfect.
The five councilmen are going to be mayors now. You're welcome.
Okay. Any other budget questions for the mayor? Mayor, do you have any final comments on this?
I don't think so.
Okay. Thanks to the people that put this budget book together and all the work that's been going on. I know it's not, it didn't just happen today. It happened over the time of several months to do this, so thank you for that. Committee, committee updates. Councilman Boone?
Actually, I was getting ready to write down. We have a harbor board meeting, which I think is pretty important, considering the lease is coming up in October, to put out. And it'll be next Thursday, I believe it's the 16th, next Thursday at 4:00 at the library, for anybody that would like to come. That's all I got.
Okay. Councilman Brown?
Yeah, you see on the agenda that we're going to make the appropriation to the school at tonight's council meeting. I got an email today, very positive results, based on our appropriation last year, and I'll read the email during council comments.
Okay. Any others?
That's it.
Councilman Conyers?
I already mentioned about the library board's concern about being adopted as a department of the city. Also, the environmental advisory board is going to be working, I think, in conjunction with the harbor board to get some Clean Marina language put into that upcoming lease.
Okay. The airport authority met just prior to this meeting and adopted a resolution in approving the financing agreement, and this will be item five on tonight's agenda. I would ask the council to support the refinancing of this debt to save the city a lot of money prior to, you know, rates trying to inch up. And we got updates on the, and I don't have my notes in front of me, on the east side improvement project. They are slightly ahead of schedule there. I don't think there was anything else on that. I think that was the pertinent stuff right now on the airport authority, and that's all I have on that. Who's missing? Jay's missing, isn't he? Keep looking for someone else. Okay. Department head updates? I can't see you all. Y'all want to go around the room, but we're starting to back. Tim, are you in the very back corner?
I got something.
All right. Jim, if you'll stand up when it come to you, so we can see you.
Just letting you know, the 10 o'clock clock's not even working. They should be open in five to six weeks before people leave.
Okay.
I don't have anything else.
Other than somebody plugged into the stormwater sewer?
All right, I'm going to do-
Yeah. Just one street closed down in town.
Turk Street was shut down, we discovered, oh, Turk Street building probably 40, 50 years ago. System was out of the stormwater. So we actually shut down traffic early this morning. We were out in the sewer near the main hall, and got back to the streets, back closed, till after 11:00. There is back, we're going to do asphalt, proceed on that. We'll finish, uh, there is.
Thank you, Dan.
All right. Quick, I'll worry about the auger more. We do have a meeting in the morning, Dan and myself, with engineer. We'll step closer to the beginning, the, we'll go in, uh, figures. My grass, oh. We've got Arctic Grass coming up next week in Public Works. We're working extremely hard to get everything up and running, ready to go, flowers all in. We got a fix staying in repair, plus our repairs. So, he'd like, just glad to be here, man.
Thank you. Thank you, Arthur. Who's next? Who's next? Sherri Lee? Oh, we're going to go this side, okay.
I would just ask, there's like maybe five positions in the budget. They are replacements for people that are retiring, or people that have resigned and already left. Those department heads have already put in authorizations to hire. I would just ask if you possibly give them consideration for that.
Do we have, you sent an email. I saw a list. Were those on the list?
There's maybe five. We have three people retiring, and now we have two people resigned. It's like maybe only five. And Jill has them listed as replacements on the list.
Okay. No, that's another, that's all. Anybody else over here? Chief?
Uh, just like-
Chief, Chief Peters. There's two chiefs standing next to each other.
Um, like I said, we're getting ready for our Arctic Grass. We've been working real hard with all of the departments to get everything signed, lined up, and we want to make everything safe. So we've been working with private office and the federal department to try to make sure that we don't have any incidents, and we are very excited, you know? I mean, they're my rock.
Chief Ellis, do you have anything?
Just let everybody know, we, the department head had 82 calls for service in the month of February.
Okay. Is there anybody else over here? Martin? Oh, wait, you don't work for the city. I just thought you did.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go back. Sherri Lee?
Um, just involved in Arctic Grass now, hold on to, and assessing, reassessing the department, like we mentioned, we've talked about, and evaluating where the needs are for this department, and have a good strategy moving forward. It is in the budget, and also looking to build, you know, the positions that some people that are pretty overwhelmed. And I heard there's some issues with watering grass and things like that. I'm assuming that, you know, has me a little bit concerned. But, um, other than that, I met with everyone who you guys know about that, talking about the land development, and doing some more economic development, you know, that we lost, and about some other potential partnerships for the city.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we had a, last two, I think we had a good town hall meeting. We had a lot of feedback about the moratorium and some planning issues, and so we have taken that into consideration. We're also, as we said the last time, preparing amendments that we hope to bring forward at some point. Both still working hard. We've got a lot of applications moving to the system. Either we have a moratorium, there's several other, our company, we are, we're out moving forward, those have been quite busy, but we are totally buzzing away on trying to prepare the business to the council to look at, and have to look at them.
Thank you, Wayne.
Hi, Bobby Hoffman, golf course. We're getting ready for the busy season. We have a lot on the plate. First of all, I'd like to thank Jeff Williams. He's got the golf course in really good shape, and he's prepared to get a good review this week. We saw a big tick upswing in, uh, Frehmsden, the north, coming down to visit. I was over, standing playing golf this year. We have two more big items with the Gulf Sports Golf Association, with Michigan Coffee Club coming back to play. So it's, it's been a good year for golf. We are under some stress with the equipment. We have water damage under the windows at the golf course. We have moved out of the golf shop. We have our register computer moved into the clubhouse dining area. We have some of our apparel set up in there so we can still run down the cell. Dan was able to help get a little trailer out there to get my office into. We've had to move a lot of the golf shop inventory out there. Dan is head structural engineer, and the insurance company will now assess the situation. Class cannabis has been involved in that as well, and hauled information for you all to the mayor's city council to see. Dan can tell you more of the specifics on it. Because right now, as for operations, we're in pretty good shape, considering that we're out there. I'd like to announce tonight to the employees, the department has most of them know, the weather coming up this Sunday, we're going to cancel the employee golf outing for this Sunday. We have a rainy day in March 26th. We have a nice golf tournament for employees. They're going to have a nice, you know, a lot of fun together. And or Robben, I've been involved with that, but that will be canceled due to the 26th. I think Jeff's got some idle spaces. It's real warm, this golf course. We want to turn up the entire department. The mayor's golf tournament, mayor, I do need to meet with you about the league tournament. That's an exciting time. The Jake, and Don Wagon, they've done a great job. That's coming up on March 23rd. We have a nice, we've boxed in on that, this, yesterday, last night, and then this tournament, Kerry Mackey. The league tournament's in good shape. It's, I think we have 186 players signed up to sign up to play. We have 26 teams the afternoon, which is full in the morning. We still have some slots to sell on that. It's a big time for golf, and well, great, thank you for letting me talk about it. But as soon as they give the information back, we are going to have to sit down and deal with some issues to reconstruct or fix a little bit of the clubhouse. So that will be coming to you soon, if we can, through the financials.
Okay, thank you, Bob. That's the way you do a department report right there. Dan?
Uh, yes, sir. Bobby said, golf course, we have insurance adjusted, and he is engineer out there doing their survey, and the report is expected back next week, after the next quarter, that beyond the difference. So we are, for you probably, next council meeting, our request that you allow the mayor to negotiate, reschedule with the engineering company that's selected by the mayor, all the by our list, the recall, the hiring. He was thinking of flaunting himself to be out there touring these other inspections on his own, and he is well aware of the situation. And the engineer that was there, or the insurance company, was pleased that we had taken precautions here, which is what we had, closing that side of the door. Next week, report from the board. And you are going to do the agenda.
Yeah, we'll do it. We'll go through the agenda real quick. Yes, sir. Thanks for asking about that. Tom?
We've got, uh, Redmond County, there's a new soccer complex this Saturday morning. Also, the same day, baseball and softball, you know, so busy day. Nice football, not a regular complex. Thank you.
Robert and the mayor, I expect y'all to be all of that for us.
Uh, just let you know, construction permitting, inspections, everybody can see everything that's going on. We have a fairly sizable uptick in commercial and non-residential stuff. I've got a couple of churches that are talking about some significant projects. We've got quite a few new offices building, a lot of discussions with architects and planners about. So it's not just residential. We've got a lot of non-residential and commercial work that's going on, too. So it's, it's a busy time.
You getting close to hiring the new inspector?
I actually interviewed Monday and Wednesday. I did for, for the building inspection position and the fire inspection position. So I'm going to go back. I'm hoping to do a second round next week and look to make adjustments. We actually have our inspections back to 28 hours, so the guys have been, been working hard, been a lot of hours.
Anyone else? Missed anybody?
I've mentioned Peter.
That's Richard, okay, yeah. What are you sitting over there for?
I did want to tell you how much I appreciate the opportunity. I've never been engaged with a lot of the employees and a lot of supervisors, and everybody's just treated me as a government on, and it's been great. And we'll be investigating, looking at things that we need to be doing, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you. The door is always open, come visit. We'll have to go to coffee or throw the campus and, you know, see what the facility looks like and what we have planned to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, welcome.
Had a boy.
Did I miss anybody? Okay. I'll adjourn the work session and move into the agenda meeting, and we will skip down to item five. Who's going to speak on behalf of the item five? Anyone? Joe, will, someone, will you speak on behalf of the airport authority? Do you need to?
I don't think so.
Okay. Any attorney types need to speak on that?
I'm here.
Josh, okay. Josh, in fact, maybe you could give just a quick overview on that when we, when we get to the meeting.
But in the meeting?
Yeah, in the meeting. Yeah, we're just trying to determine who's going to speak on behalf of these various items. Okay. Item six. Sherri Lee, if somebody has questions, are you the one to ask on item six?
Yes.
Uh-huh, sure. Item seven. Dan? I don't think we're going to have a lot of discussion on that. I guess that'd be you, Dan? Hopefully, that one's going to go real quick.
I hope so.
Item nine? Would that be, Wayne, if we have any questions, would that be you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hey, would that be you also on item 10, Wayne?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
You got them. Twelve and 13, would be you as well?
Yes, sir. But number 13, we had some discussions earlier, and we're going to request that be tableed until the next meeting, if we could please. There are some concerns we need to investigate regarding the public right of way there. And so, if we could, we are requesting that be-
To be removed from the agenda or table? Just be best to remove it, maybe.
Yes, sir. That's about how we are.
Anybody have any heartache with that? I don't think that we do, do we?
I'm sorry, just 13, I'm sorry, just number 13. Okay, I'm sorry, 12 and 13, 12 and 13, we could, we-
Okay, council, I'll try to remember, if I don't recall. Clark, if one of you will remember to amend the agenda to remove items 12 and 13 at the request of the planning department. Item 14?
Yes, sir.
You? Okay. 15, Councilman Brown, is there someone here from EAC who will make a presentation? Fifteen, Councilman Brown, is there someone here from EAC who will make a presentation on that?
I don't know if they are or not.
Have you got all the pertinent material?
I do.
Item sixteen, I think that one speaks for itself. Item seventeen speaks for itself. Eighteen, I can speak to that if necessary. May have a question. Mr. McDonald?
Yes, sir.
Concerning item eighteen, would you speak to me after this meeting, prior to the council meeting?
Sure.
Thank you. Nineteen, our appointments to speak for themselves. And then let me also say that the executive session will be after public participation. Those were flipped on the agenda, so item twenty is public participation, and item twenty-one is executive session. We won't make you all sit around and wait on us to get out of there to, to speak your mind. I'll leave anything out, council? Okay, we've got about twenty minutes, so let's adjourn and reconvene here. Let's all try to be on time, get started.